Is everybody ready to go?
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to ask everyone to take their seats and if you have cellphones, please turn them off. All right. I would like to call this evening's meeting to a draw. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'm glad to be here. I'm the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone this evening and those watching at home. We'll begin with our first item, which is our consent agenda and the minutes. Then we will hear, we have a public hearing for a vacation. We have a site plan design review for Adams Derry Landing, a site plan design review for McCoy's Edition Lot 6, a preliminary plat for the Church of Christ, and then our other business. That being said, we have the item number one, which is the minutes and the final plat for the QuickTrip store.
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the second item on the agenda is the public hearing for the vacation for the Jack in the Box. I will open the public hearing and I will ask for a motion to continue.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along, we're on item number three, which is site plan and design review for Adams Derry Landing. Mr. Hollis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Before you tonight is a request for approval, site plan and design review approval, to redesign the storefront for Building F. And for those of you who might need a little update. Building F, it's a little difficult to see, but it's the shaded building right here of the inline stores and it was once talked about there being a bookstore in that particular tenant space. As it has worked out, that will not be the case and therefore the applicant has looked at how they might redesign that storefront in order to accommodate two tenants rather Because this is really just a storefront design change, nothing else on the site changes. The landscaping remains the same. The sidewalk or hardscape in front of the store remains the same. Everything is exactly the same except for the storefront redesign. So the building that we're talking about then is the end building. And you can see there the elevations of the north elevation as well as the west elevation and the south elevation. The redesign is really looking at matching the building that was known as Building E, which is exactly opposite the drive from this. And as you can see, it changes the storefront from the arched roofline to having a more squared off roofline as well as adding the columns then. Building E is this building here. And you can see when you put them together. That really that storefront that they're doing on for this tenant space then now matches much more closely to the building storefront that they have along Building Similarly, on the west elevation, the west elevation is shown. And the east elevation of Building E, which would be then right across the drive facing is this here. So you can see how those two now again are also somewhat similar although Building F is a bit shorter than Building E. And really with that, there are no other changes. If you have any questions, the applicant is here and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Hollis? All right, thanks.
I have one question. It's kind of off the subject a little bit, but when is the public area supposed to be completed in this development? I kind of see a shell, but you know.
When you say the public area, you're talking about the Lifestyle Center?
Right.
I think the applicant probably would be better able to answer that. They've explained to us that the way that their financing works though is that as they have their tenant spaces within those buildings leased to a certain percentage, then the banks will release the money for the next building and so on as those buildings are leased. So he can probably tell you better though the timing of exactly how that works.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here?
Hello, I'm Jeff McMahon, Red Development, 4717 Central, Kansas City, Missouri. We've seen the staff comments, we agree with them. Mr. Hollis did a good job of summarizing what we're trying to get accomplished here. It's really just a change in tenant, going from a single tenant to a multi-tenant building. Not really a major change architecturally. In answering your question, we are working on a phase two financing that'll include some other buildings. It's going to be before you, probably in the next 30 to 60 days, which also will include the Lowe's parcel as well. And when we get the phase two financing, that'll also complete the smaller shop buildings out front, some of which have begun already. That's when that middle public corridor will be completed. So I would anticipate February for the financing portion and completion this summer.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve SPDR 11 dash 10 twenty eight oh eight for Adams Derry Landing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item, this is site plan and design review for McCoy's Edition, number six.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Before you this evening is a site plan and design review approval for property known as McCoy's Edition Lot 6. The site plan and design review is required because of the change of use of the property from residential to office. The site location, as you see there, is at 712 Northwest ArtiMize Road, just west and south of the intersection of 7th Highway and ArtiMize, and immediately west of an existing office building, which is being proposed to essentially be connected to this project here before you this evening. The zoning is SO, Service Office. That was modified back in March by the Plan Commission's recommendation and City Council's approval, along with a change to the future land use map at that same time. The property itself is just slightly over half an acre in size. And again, the property contains an existing single-family residential house. It's currently under renovation. There is an existing building permit to do the majority of the renovation to this structure. And again, is before you tonight for site plan and design review approval because of this change of use. Just a few items I wanted to highlight in the staff report. As noted in the staff report, the proposed driveway off of ArtiMize is actually, the existing driveway, I should say, is being proposed to be removed and just have a walkway connecting to the existing parking lot for the office building immediately to the east of the property. So with the parking itself, it is noted in the staff report that just four spaces are required, or three and a half technically, and that's identified here. This is the draft cross-parking access agreement and one of the conditions is that this be indeed recorded with the county as part of their approval request tonight. Landscaping is another item I wanted to mention. Again, there's, as you've probably driven by several times, there is ample mature landscaping on the property. The applicant is looking to kind of, I guess, manicure that and enhance that to a degree and that is included in your staff report with their landscape plan as well. So they're, in terms of plant units, well above the minimum requirement for this project. In terms of building design, again, it is just a converted residential building and so it's typical of the single-family residence with the vinyl lapboard siding, typical residential type windows and doorways. They're again in the process of adding a new porch, portico, set up with handicap ramp and sidewalk again leaning back to the existing parking to the east of this property. With that, staff does recommend approval with six conditions and those are identified on page eight of eight. If there are any comments or questions, certainly happy to respond.
Mr. Evans?
Just a quick, simple question. Is it because of the fact that we're just renovating an existing building that we're not actually seeing any design drawings here other than we're just seeing site drawings?
Well, it is simply a change of use, which necessitates a site plan and design review. And again, we're looking more at the site plan rather than design, if that's what you're saying.
That's exactly what I'm saying. We're not getting any drawings as far as what this porch is they're putting on the front or what they're doing to the outside of the building.
No, I apologize, I do not have those. Perhaps the applicant may have some to share this evening, but.
I know it's partially done.
Right.
But.
I did bring the building permit application and attachments and perhaps I may have something there to share.
Just it's unusual that we don't actually see some drawings.
The only thing that they really provided as far as a drawing is this.
Okay.
The only thing we really received from them as far as a drawing was this. And of course, when we received it, we had it on a much larger sheet, so you're looking at a smaller sheet. But basically, that's the front and that's what will be retained as far as.
With the exception of this porch that they're building on the outside.
Right, just a wood structure porch is all that's been added on with handicap ramp.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Like to make a presentation?
Anyone have any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant? I guess you're off the hook tonight.
Okay.
Bring it back up here for discussion. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, excuse me, I'd like to move that SPDR dash 11 dash 10 dash 2811 with the staff six conditions. I make a motion for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us to the preliminary plat for the Church of Christ. Mr. Allen.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Before you is an application from the Church of Christ for a preliminary plat to combine two previously unplanted tracts of land into one lot. Property is located at the southwest corner of Sunnyside School Road and northeast ArtiMize, 314 Northeast ArtiMize. It's just over an acre in size, the total property in question. The zoning is SF7, single-family residential. As you know, all religious assembly is permitted, or religious assembly is permitted in all zoning districts, including SF7 here. Just a quick summary of process to date, previous actions and approvals, as we call them. A variance was approved by the Board of Zoning Adjustment back on December 1st. The variance was to allow for a reduction in required landscape buffer widths. In yellow there, along the west and south property lines, from 15 feet, which is normally required, to seven feet. And that's in order to allow that existing parking lot primarily, as you see, to the north and west of the property to remain, as well as expansion of parking lot to the south. I'll show a drawing here shortly. Secondly, there was an approval of the variance same time for the sidewalk on red there along Northeast Sunnyside School Road. There's an existing sidewalk present at four feet in width. The code calls for five feet and again, that was allowed to remain at the four foot width per the Board of Zoning Adjustment variance approval. Along with this, applicant has submitted for final plat approval and is scheduled for the next scheduled Plan Commission meeting, which is January 10th and then January 18th, City Council meeting. So again, I mentioned the sidewalk improvements that is allowed to remain per the variance approval. However, as even noted at the Board of Zoning Adjustment meeting, it's really that property to the north and west, that western buffer that is the, that was the issue the church had in terms of the width requirement. But you can see here, there's ample property to include both landscaping and stormwater detention there in the south as a part of their presently proposed driveway expansion, which is going through the building permit review process as we speak to allow additional parking and then access to Sunnyside School Road. With that, I do, excuse me, do want to make mention of the information on page four or five regarding stormwater detention. The stormwater study and detention plans were submitted to the city engineering were deemed acceptable at this time. However, again, as the church looks to expand beyond the proposed parking lot and either increase parking in addition to that or their, the building itself, additional storage volume would be required and new stormwater plans would be mandated at that time. So it does meet the present proposed driveway, but what you see there may be modified as they come forward with additional expansion plans and approvals later on. With that, again, street improvements as part of this plat, additional five feet of dedicated street right away on Sunnyside School Road has been provided to meet the current requirement for minor collectors to have 60 feet rather than 50 feet of right away width. And with that, staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat with four conditions. Again, if there are any questions or comments, happy to respond.
Mr. Allen, can you show me on this particular drawing where the entrance is going to be off of Sunnyside School Road?
Sure. This is the proposed entrance here, driveway apron off Sunnyside School Road. There are single-family, existing single-family residences located on these three lots.
And how close is that parking lot and that entrance to that residence onto the south?
That is a good question. I'm not entirely sure I did not measure off exactly how far this is, but I don't know if we have, if Jim or Cesar have any measurements that we recall.
I don't recall maybe we got Cesar, but I've seen some on the storefronts. You asked him to the lot line or to the residence, so.
To the, well, either one. I'm wondering how far away that single-family dwelling is from the parking lot. I mean, we're going to have cars parking in their side yard.
Oh, I seriously, no, I'm just, we can certainly guesstimate here.
Yeah, I can't tell from what we have.
To the actual residence, it looks to be certainly over 50, 60 feet from that driveway to this existing residence. And again, we did, there were some comments, questions from some of the surrounding neighborhood prior to the Board of Adjustment meeting. I don't believe we received any comments on this application, but at the Board of Adjustment meeting, no one spoke in favor or against other than from the church itself, so.
But there were some residents there, so they did have the opportunity.
Yes, there was an opportunity for residents to speak in favor or against and did not take that opportunity at that time, so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Does the applicant like to make a presentation?
I'm one of the three elders at the Church of Christ and basically here to answer any questions that you might have. We are looking to expand the parking facilities, one because we've got cars parking on Sunnyside School Road now that we would like to get off that, that particular area and that's the main reason for this expansion. Are there any questions at all?
Have you had contact with that residence to the south?
Not specifically, no. We haven't. There is yard there now and the detention pond that will go in will also be in that area to the south and there are existing shrubs between our lot and their house now. So I don't think it will be a problem.
Won't affect them?
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions for Mr. Evans? Yes?
Do you have plans for building onto your building fairly soon?
It won't be very soon, no. We would like to expand the building, but we're a relatively small group and looking at the costs involved, we're going to have to piecemeal it. And the parking lot was the first section. The other one, I'm sure will be multiple years away by the time we assemble the money.
Any other questions for Mr. Evans? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Bringing it up here, any discussion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve preliminary plat PP 10 dash 10 dash 2778 for Church of Christ.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us to other business. I see we have a notice here on our little magnet for the recycling center. Everyone got one of those? And also, I think everyone had in their packet a copy of the commissioner. And did you read your article? You all were shining brightly and so I thought that was very nice. You did a good job.
Madam Chair, I have an item I'd like to bring up tonight.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to have some discussion of Gregos Landscaping, which is on the north outer road next to Guyer Fence Company. I don't know that they've ever come before this group and if anybody's out of conformance with the regulations, it's them. It looks like a dumping ground for railroad ties.
Yes, it does.
And I'd like to have some discussion of what's happening with that business.
Excuse me, back in October, we spoke with Gregos and talked to them about bringing that property into conformance and their first step to doing that was that they implemented the use without site plan and design review approval. They claimed that they were unaware at that time that they were, had to do anything like that, that the landlord hadn't told them that they would need to do that. So anyway, I followed that up with a letter and basically said that they were to come in and they haven't responded with any kind of informal or formal application and I will be getting back with them with a follow-up letter that basically gives them now a specific timeline by which they must submit a pre-application and then from the pre-application, we will do a specific timeline for which they'll have to come in for the site plan and design review. But you are correct in that they do need to go through site plan and design review and when we went out to inspect the site, it was myself as well as codes inspector and the only violations that they really had at the time had to do really with planning regulations. I was kind of surprised, but they don't have any code violations other than they don't meet any of the planning regulations that they will need as far as screening goes and as far as, you know, going through site plan and design review, putting in landscape buffers and those kinds of things. They told me that they were willing to do those kinds of things, however, as I said, they also haven't responded back with any kind of even informal.
How long is a business allowed to operate when they're not in compliance with regulations?
Well, I might let Scott address that. I mean, that's, that's a call that we would have to make as to whether or not we want to just shut.
I'm sorry.
I said, I might have Scott address that, but that's a call we'd have to make as to whether or not we want to just plain flat out shut them down until they go through the process.
Well, they're really a eyesore to the city and a very visible eyesore and I think something ought to be done about them.
Right, and we've, we've had several complaints, which is why it came, it rose to our level back in October, had the site visit and as Jim mentioned, in terms of actual municipal code, you know, in terms of life, safety, health type issues, there were little to none. It's really the planning side of things and we do have some, you know, enforcement provisions in that and that's what we're looking, hopefully we can avoid that, but we're, that will be, as Jim mentioned, the next step if we don't receive any response from them shortly, is to move to that level.
Is everyone aware of where the location of it is?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great.
Mm-hmm, yeah, all right.
Very good. Well, if you would keep us posted on, on what goes on with that, that would be good.
Sure.
Okay. The only other thing I wanted to bring up is I read an article in the paper, one of the communities, now we're thinking it may have been Kansas City, is doing the back-end angle parking. And so I had asked staff to let me know who was doing, because I don't remember who it was and how it was going and so hopefully we'll have a report on that soon. And I was also curious what we were going to do about parking downtown. We had talked about possibly doing meter parking and I'd like to see where we are with that.
It's downtown Kansas City. It's a block east of Grand. I can't remember what the name of the street is, between 20th and about 18th. And it doesn't look like it's working very well to me. I go by it quite often and cars are pointed every which way and it's kind of disconcerting when you drive down it and all these cars are pointing right, pointed right at you because they're on the side of the street that you're driving on.
And it's only one block that they're doing this in?
It's one pretty long block, but yeah. At least that's the only place I know it is right now.
Okay.
It's supposed to be safe.
All right.
Oh, no, just in response to the downtown parking issue, our Assistant City Administrator is very tied in with the downtown planning effort and so we've had discussions again, even after the last national planning conference where there's a lot of discussion. I know a few of us went to some sessions on parking management, especially downtown parking, so we flooded him with information. So he's well aware and we keep him apprised of any new information we get, so we're passing it up the line as, as we get information.
Very good.
Madam Chair, in regard to that, I did have a resident approach me in regard to the back-end parking.
Oh, really?
And thought, they experienced it down there and thought it, it worked well because you're not backing out blindly when you go to leave and the way the doors open, children can't run out into oncoming traffic because the doors prohibit them from doing that. They're forced to go towards the sidewalk, yeah, so.
Well, I know we, when we were in New Orleans, that we had a class on, on just that and they were really kind of pushing it, saying, you know, this was a great advantage. So I was kind of curious when I saw someone in the area was trying it to see how successful it would be.
Right, I know they, they try to sell that to the merchants as well, saying that with folks backing up, they can just open their trunks and load all their purchases. So that was the other, you know, kind of side, exactly, so they can just load things right in.
There, they're backing up against the parking lot. There's no.
Yeah, you might not want to have parking meters in there. Okay, anything else for discussion this evening?
Madam Chair, just a reminder, the next meeting is, is going to be January 10th, so again, the Church of Christ was here, they have the final plat application in, in our office and they were gracious enough to move that to the January 10th in consideration of the Christmas holidays.
Excellent, very good. Well, seeing no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn and wish you all a very. and wish you all a very wonderful Christmas and a Happy New Year.
So moved.
We are done.